They do a very, very good job.
Questions from to us? Cancel first?
If I could just make one final statement before you guys have your discussion, I apologize. What we're asking for here, we're trying to do good thing. And I understand the not in my backyard summit. I have been there. I've been on the other side protesting development. It was shocking, but I just don't feel like the issues that were raised at Board of Zoning, after we've been able to investigate them and vet this information, I just don't see that it's a reason for a council like yourself to decline investment, development, housing that's needed in the community. So I would just ask that, you know, you fairly read this and I know you well, I just don't think that we're creating an issue. I think that it's, you know, everyone would rather have that open acre because it's very nice, it's very, it gives it a roll feeling. But we've been doing this, looking at properties, as the mayor knows, for about eighteen months now, and it's not easy to be able to buy properties.
You did try to go out on Elizabeth. I've tried twice to buy a house back there to maybe mitigate some of the traffic from all going on North Robinson to no avail.
The house or just the section of property?
So we tried the house.
One of the homes that actually owns the Pete, uh, would have given, uh, would have given me right away. We're going to continue to pursue that. Ideally, what we'd like to do would be to just have two duplexes, exit of Robinson, and two duplexes, you know, go out up Elizabeth, which would really split it up. Absolutely no straight through because that would just turn into a racetrack there. So, but, you know, obviously this all has to be approved and it will go through that process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cancel. Questions?
I have, I do want to make a statement. I've seen your specs and I think they're beautiful and I would love to have one of those in my neighborhood. So kudos to you for that. I understand what they're saying and a lot of it is the amount of traffic and vehicles on this little road. Have you given any thought to just having, when you do your rentals, having just two car lanes in them?
Maximal.
Yeah, that's what I mean, maximum.
You would certainly look at that. That's a good idea. There are a lot of vehicles up and down that road already and on San Millroy, tons of trucks pulled to the side and covered and it's, there's a lot. I would just say, let's be fair. So there's one house that I think has five vehicles.
And you may also, you may have individual residences that are single people in one park. So to try to project the number of vehicles is speculation. We could build, you know, it's a one acre parcel. You could easily build four houses on quarter acre lots back there. And you could very easily, if any one of those residents have three or four drivers and have a multiple more of cars than the duplexes might generate. So it's really kind of projecting, I think, as to what it's going to be. It does not exactly mean we're going to have a lot of vehicles. It's the potential. You know, if you had two of each one, sure, but it doesn't mean that that's going to happen.
I'm going to say something about having background on on this. What kind of eviction warrant do you guys have?
Honestly, I have never evicted anyone. So I have not ever turned over anyone after one year. I have not turned over anyone after five years. So I do not lie when I tell you that we inspect them. I just bought, we bought the house on Summit that backs to Prince.
Princeville.
Prince William. And the banks, it was my house. First thing we did, painted it. We just bought the house on North Street that's beside the Baptist pastor, Bill and his wife, and they neglected the outside of the house. We did have time, but the neighbors let us know, it's, it's a shit show in here, look at this. And that was the first thing. We pulled contractors off of other jobs. And when we do them, we remodel them like I would live in them. If I wouldn't want a stone driveway, I'm having concrete. If I don't, we bought Washington Street and we put money in the exterior of that. It had asphalt, but it was dated and we seal coated it, re-landscaped it. So Mark and I take a lot of pride. And it's somewhat offensive that, that they can see this as a negative, but that's their right and good for them. And let's applaud that and let's find out what their concerns are and address them.
Questions?
The four votes, like the maximum of four votes would be just like we could have that.
So we haven't gotten approval. Mark's working on a survey.
It would be no more than four, I can commit to that.
And really the question before that's all is whether or not to approve the special exemption to allow multifamily. It's great that you presented the site plans and of course we didn't ask what your intent is with the property, but when it does come to a vote, if we are not ready for yet, it will be on whether or not to approve the special exemption for multifamily. I did pull up the zoning just so you can see where we are. Here's Elizabeth Street, of course, with the cul-de-sac. This is the property in question. And it is Zone 1, but very close to it is local business. So there used to be a, what, greenhouse on the corner here and of course, Ed Curtins is still in this area. And I would have to say we have a, perhaps other businesses that are in this sort of area as well. But it is a narrow street. I appreciate your, during the homework, you look at what other, the width of other streets of the city and what kinds of dwellings are there. Some of those were, some of those, Clyde Street I did know about, the apartment building at the end, but you certainly pointed out a number of others that I had not really thought about being in that same classification. As we look at this, I believe in addition to, you know, whether we can approve it or not, you can approve it with certain stipulations if we choose to do so. Is that correct? Just so, you know, if you want to put provisions on it, the street gets widened or becomes a less street, literally like in videos, there are certain things that could be mistaken. Before we open it up, I'd like to tell them if you have other comments or questions.
Let me answer what about you run a management company, so you're really selective on duplexes? Cause it sounds like that's part of the question too, is, you know, sometimes you get renters that don't keep stuff up.
So that's kind of false to me. Every person living in the home has to fill out application and has to have a background check. And one person can qualify their income, but every person will be checked and has been. So the home and floor we just did, a guy that spreads hog manure and his health, and so his health had to have their information. So I lost a runner because, or a potential because, well, I don't know, cause his roommate, maybe there was something there. So they have to pass a credit check, a background check. Everybody in there has to have, you know, their car, their license number, if they have a driver's license. So, and we have a leasing company that takes care of that to keep us legal and she's smarter than, than we. And that's kind of, you know, that's kind of detailed and you have to do it right in order to do it right all the time and not on too busy a note. That's her job and we pay a fee, a handsome fee.
And, you know, operate within law, that's critical. She's very good at this, that's why we, we want to her. But there's financial requirements, it just is a, it's a, it's a very well, she does a great job following people. And I think for that reason, now if we don't turn it over. These will, I will also say, these will rent, I don't know the exact numbers, but they will rent somewhere between probably twelve hundred, eighteen hundred, two thousand a month. So these are not six hundred dollar, seven hundred dollar apartments.
Which is not to be critical, but the community has a need for all of it. There's all kinds of income levels.
These will attract more, you know, young professionals, you know, families that, you know, operate, you know, they're very legit people you'd like to have as neighbors. That's what we're looking for.
We are going to open it up now for, for comments from the public, questions addressed to the Hammonds. The procedure that we're going to follow is this, please raise your hand if you desire to speak. And then we'll ask when you're recognized if you state your name and address. And that's for the record. And then please offer your comments or questions in a respectful manner. We will begin then. Yes?
My name's Greg Fox. I live at 102 North Robinson Street. Me and my wife have lived at 102 North Robinson Street for almost twenty years. When we moved there, it was only four houses on that street. Now there's seven. And that's including Piatt's House, which is on San Millroy Road and Robinson Street. It is a good, safe place for our kids to grow up and play. And the special exemption will endanger the safety, comfort, and health because the road width is only thirteen point three foot wide in front of our house. That's at the mailbox. I know we've already went over this. The traffic from Chambers Estates also uses Robinson Street. Even though it is a dead end, my wife has literally had to yell at people, slow down coming in or out of Robinson Street. There are sixty-four kids or grandkids that live on or visit here. Robinson Street is Zone U1, single family, twelve. Robinson Street, I do not think is set up for drainage and runoff for four multifamily Especially on one lot. Our property value will also go down because people do not own it, they don't respect their property, most times they don't take care of it, they treat their neighbors like crap. I have nothing against renters. I've been a renter for years, as lucky as my own home. Now, there will be more traffic than what we have now. And even though people have monitored it, they don't live there, they don't know how much traffic's up and down that road all the time. And as far as road width, no matter where you are on that road, you either have to stop and get off the side of the road, or get off the side of the road to try to pass somebody at the same time. And if this is passed, it won't be known as a quiet part of Delphi anymore. It's been known for just single family housing. To me, with the petition with twenty-five signatures from Robinson Street and surrounding areas should be a clear sign to the council that this is not wanted in our area. And you should stand with the citizens in our town and not against them. If anything, the road will have to be widened. And in my yard loan, there are two telephone poles, a fire hydrant, water meter, and gas lines. Is the Hammond's going to pay for this or is the taxpayer's going to have to second up and pay for it? That's all I got. I do have a question. If there's supposedly hardly any traffic on the road, couldn't they put up a timer or monitor to monitor the traffic? Because there's a lot more traffic than what's suggested. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any others who would like to speak? Yes?
My name's Randall Piatt. I'm at 1209 San Millroy Road, around the corner, Millroy Road and Robinson Street. I want to start out a couple of things that you brought up. According to City Airlines, Robinson Street is a dead end road. You cannot go out the other way for the death of Robinson Street. And I applaud you for spending a few days of research. I have thirty years of research there. Just because there's no traffic today, doesn't mean next week it will be flying cars. It all depends on the Chambers Estates renters. And you're wanting to add more matters to this. So if you just haven't hit a day or a week when it's not much traffic coming out of it, after you left, three cars in the Chambers Estates. Like I said, you've been in this eighteen months, I've been here thirty years living And at the zoning board, they said that Elizabeth Street is too dangerous to have entries far enough that property. There's other people there that heard it. So Elizabeth Street's out. The only option is Robinson Street coming out the way. This is a picture of Robinson Street. If you can see that. You can't fit two cars on Robinson Street. I prepared a thank you. That picture was taken through my back driveway in a stop sign. So that's where everybody comes on and off the road. I'd like to start off by stating that I'm not against housing for Delphi. This is about the right kind of housing at the right location. In fact, I understand that the city of Delphi has acquired property on Washington Street across from the body works. Is this property being developed for housing? If no, why not? It's easy to get settled by traffic and also within walking distance of downtown businesses. Seems to me like more of a suitable location for multifamily home. At the BCU meeting, it was revealed that he was developing, proposing at least four duplexes on Robinson Street. Residents of Robinson Street submitted, signed petition to halt this development. The petition was signed by all the residents of Robinson Street and other than infected area. We feel it's the wrong type of development for the area. As a property owner looking at Robinson Street, I'd like to voice my concerns following our responses to the five questions found in the Carroll County Attorney's Zoning Board as handled. The first one, special exemption will endanger the public safety, comfort, and general welfare of the public in this residential neighborhood. I've lived in my home for thirty years. It was a quiet, peaceful neighborhood. That is why we bought here. There were four houses plus my driveway. The road was a narrow road, then would only accommodate a few vehicles a day. Since then, the road was dead ended by the Millroy Road, creating one way in and one way out. We've had two habitat houses added, plus access to Chambers Estates, which will be your tollables for emergency vehicles only. The road is still officially a dead end road that measures fifty over thirteen feet. An alley is twelve feet from my understanding. We know from, we know now, or we now experience traffic from certain Chambers Estates tenants and the added habitat houses on the same narrow road, narrow enough that passing cars must use property owner's yards to pass. However, our families expected to join our properties when at any time a vehicle could be driving in it. Certain Chambers Estates tenants have increased police traffic. Are we to expect this with this development as well? More than doubling the mouth of residents is going to raise worry and concern for our children and grandchildren. How the collecting now residing and visiting children, number sixty-four, raises a question, how many more vehicles will these duplexes add for visiting family and friends? You said it's limited number for people live there. What about their visiting family and visiting friends? You've got to figure those into question. Number two, the special exemption will injure the use and enjoyment of the other property in the vicinity on both sides of this parcel. Robinson Street is officially a dead end, so no true traffic is to be used in the road. This makes this area a quiet, peaceful neighborhood with only one access point. We enjoy family activities on our property, increasing population in this road to more than double on one lot is sure to change this. Adding this many residents to one lot will surely cause privacy issues to our secluded neighborhood. This is why certain areas are zoned the way they are, this one being U1. If the town does upgrade the road, am I supposed to be grateful that for losing part of my property, just to benefit one developer who will be sold out in ten years? What about to affect our property values? I have two articles, both written in August, that suggest property values will go down more rates. It's a question about how much? I have a third article, as much as thirteen point eight percent. If you'd like. Is the city of Delphi going to provide us a check when we sell our property to recover our lost property values? Number three, the special exemption will feed the normal and overly development and improvements of the surrounding properties for permitted, for use permitted in this district. This has always been a neighborhood of single family dwellings. Any recent homes that have been added on this road were single family homes. This lot will have at least four duplexes. Will this be the beginning of multifamily rental property and an end to a single private home housing? Will any future resident want to buy or build on a lot containing at least four duplexes filled with rent? Number four, adequate utilities, access road, drainage, and other infrastructure do not currently exist on a vacant lot. Robinson Street is a dead end non-through road, with the width of the road makes it impossible for two cars to be head on and stay on the road. What happens in the winter when it's only plowed the width of one vehicle? Will the city plan to widen the road to keep the cost of the taxpayers? Will they move the utility poles for utility lines, water meters, fire hydrants, etc., to widen the road only to shrink our properties to benefit the development of four duplexes on this lot? How well a billion other duplexes affect drainage for surrounding areas? Rain runoff from roofs have to go somewhere that would be naturally absorbed by the land. At my second job, I spent a lot of time in subdivision. I have personally seen the building of one house on one lot, caused flooding on a neighboring Places that were always dry now have standing water for days after a rain. Here we are speaking of multiple buildings, not just one. How much water do you want to shed and where? Neighborhood properties. Number five, ingress to egress points. There is only one official access to Robinson Street. Traffic will be more congested, as I mentioned, this is a serious concern because of the limited access to the property. See, you need research. I have thirty years of research in watching what goes on here at Robinson Street. Looking at a map, spending fifteen minutes out on Robinson Street, or driving up and down on the street on Sunday afternoon, will not show you what it is we deal with. You have to be there when the eight to nine foot wide school bus comes down the road. You have to be there when the eight to nine foot trash trucks pick up our trash, plus the one that empties its dumpster for Chambers Estates. You have the city trucks, especially now, picking up leaves and limbs. See, the permanent residents of Robinson Street know what is better on Robinson Street. The renters though, don't know, some don't care. You see that, you see they are the ones that don't look until the last minute to see if it's clear to enter or leave Robinson Street. Or to look to see if there's a children playing in someone's yard. It is the renters and their guests that fly up and down Robinson Street at thirty-plus miles an hour. You should have been there the day of the horrible crash on the Heartland that closed the northbound lanes. Then the train stopped blocking all the crossings in town. See, San Millroy Road is the alternative route when all the crossings are closed. There was a steady stream of cars going up and down San Millroy. The northbound traffic getting around the accident and the others bypassing the closed train crossings. You can imagine the speed that few vehicles were traveling. You should have been there to see the near misses of people turning onto Robinson Street to turn around, only to meet the next person with the same idea and nearly colliding at the stop sign, all because the traffic on Millroy Road got backed up.
Mr. Piatt?
Yeah?
One more minute, please.
Yeah, I'm almost done. Do you really want to add the traffic from these duplexes to this? Is it going to take a horrible accident here for you to realize what we are talking about? Like I stated at the beginning, it is not about stopping Delphi这条路. It's about sensible housing. After you vote, I have one request. If you vote for the special exemption, give the honest reason why. Not just a standard Delphi mentality, an honest reason. One for all of us here, plus those that will watch this on video, all of Delphi citizens. If not, I guess we will have our answer anyway. We will know that you stand with investors, not the citizens of Delphi. See, you have an entire neighborhood here expressing concern, but instead you sided with an investor. An investor would be gone in ten years. Even in late Sarah Mansick was against this type of development here. If this keeps happening on every corner of neighborhood, you're going to lose the citizens like me. The ones that came here for the small town feel, not the loftiest style of owners everywhere. The ones that are here for permanent home, not temporary one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piatt. Yes?
I'd like a chance to speak. My name's Monica Abbott. I live on 201 North Robinson Street. And today with me, I have my daughter Yana and my daughter, Claudia. My girls are not with me today because election day is tomorrow and I'm teaching them a lesson. My girls are not with me today because I need them to experience what the city council meeting is. I've been a resident of this county my entire life. She's been here fifteen. Thank you all for serving a little bit of safe zones. My girls are here also because they hold value in our home. If you ask them why they do a chore, why they have to do something around our neighborhood, it's because they're part of it. They have to contribute where they live. A lot of that goes into our community and contributing is helping our neighbors, keeping a good eye out for them. Our concern, my standpoint on this is definitely safety. And I comment that with you guys, with the narrowing of the road. I don't, I did not cheer kick any facts to come here today to present to you. I don't have articles, I don't have anything like that. But what I will tell you is as a mom, and the lady left, I believe her name's Penny and she's with, is your name Jeff, sir? Is this?
Yeah.
Watson, Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Anyway, I think Penny's been with him and she left. All I have to say to this is the entire time I owned this home, which has been since 2013, I have been to the Watsons to speak to them in person about the safety of my children because of the tenants traveling up and down the road. It is very wrong. And I'm sorry, but to say that it is average or common to many other narrow roads doesn't make a big difference. Sorry, the safety concerns in Delphi we may, we need to pay attention to. Doesn't make our narrow road not safe. It just means that there's other narrowings in our town we need to pay attention to. And I'm sorry, but tonight, when I'm putting a through therapy session, my daughter's sending me a video of people passing in our yard and in the yard across from us just to get by or just to have a conversation about tonight's events is a little concerning to me. To say that it isn't an issue, no it is, clearly. If two vehicles cannot pass on that and my children are outside, it is an issue. I've had to say it multiple times, that is my concern. I purchased a home in a single family area. I am thirty-eight years old. I spent most of my twins paying off my life debt to purchase a home to raise my girls in, in my community that I won't stay in. I am here because my grandmother's still here. That's six generations, y'all. Okay, we are vested. And I'm here to stand up for our rights. If you guys would like to build property there, great, make it beautiful, but make it single family, not multifamily, it is not appropriate for this, inappropriate for that neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Thank you. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much for your thoughts. And the others who would like to voice comments or ask questions? I heard several concerns.
My concern is Robinson Street in general. With the, with the, I mean, I stopped out there for the half of the side of the road. So I have issues with, with the, with the street. And I also have issues with the traffic going from Chamber Estates to the thing, to fly on that curve there. On gravel pavement, and I think that should be definitely completely not just gravel to pavement. If the, then this work, just the many, the traffic going from that area.
So you have problems on the Chamber Estates, but it's been in streets.
Correct, might put a physical barrier down there.
Chamber Estates is probably the least.
Right, I think Robinson Street could say that.
No on-street parking, yeah. I, I understand that, that that is a narrow street and I don't, you know, explain that at all. However, if you're traveling down the road street and a car is parked on both sides of the street and you have a car coming towards you, you got to definitely, so to stop just on, on roads like Robinson where we have that issue because we narrow them, that's not the discount, you know, instead of Robinson, it is something that's pulling down our street. So, what is, Council's pleasure?
I guess this would be like an open question to all the residents of Robinson Street. If there was the road widened, and let's say that it was not widened so far as to have to relocate all the utilities. I suspect about a foot and a half, two feet on each side would be sufficient, but let's, if even that. So let's say that the road was widened and that the dead end was made so that Chamber Estates cannot go under Robinson. Would that at all change your feeling about it, my opinion?
The city would not put barriers on Robinson, into Robinson Street, they still for emergency vehicles, they would not get it at all. That was brought up when the Chamber Estates were built. And they turned me down, why suggested something like that? It has to stay open for emergency vehicles. But that doesn't mean anybody else wants to keep it, even though it's in this contract, they can't use it. Some of them still do.
I know they do, but I was out there today and they are coming around the corner, and I'm pretty sure we can vet it, if you have any support for emergency vehicle access, we can come in off of Samuel or. Mr. Foss, you would say nothing?
Yes, I also agree with Randy, they already said they would shut down. Also in regards to like moving poles, if you measure the two poles in my yard, they're probably both gonna have to be moved, especially the one right there at the corner. It's probably right there at a foot away. And especially, I, yeah, I think it's probably a foot and a half away from the road.
I think it's gonna be a question of where the actual widening points are to, I know, Mr. Foss, you have to question, state your name, please.
I was told there's another, no courthouse, I was implying.
Name and address.
Jeff Watson. Twenty-eight forty-seven, Missy Lane. Owned the property Chamber Estates. I think you'll find, I looked up a long time ago, that, I don't know how the city city would react to this, but eighteen forty-seven, eighteen ninety-two, that was a plotted street, Chamber Estates drive is a plotted street. It's not been taken in, the city has not taken over. But I think you'll find out that was plotted from the city to make. So it is a plotted street, that's why the, the school corporation and the, the city said that they were going to use it, school corporate said they were going to use it in groups. I think you can find it, I don't, I don't know.
It was a private development, the street was not built to city standards, so.
Yeah, so it's a private street, but it, it is, it is noted on the books, so I don't think I'd keep people up in there. As much as I would like, I would like to keep my people actually on Samuel Millbrook Road, they don't need to come with it. We tried, but they, right now, we, we tell when they rent it to go down there, but when they call the police department, police department, they say we moved down there straight, so what am I supposed to do?
Okay, well, now, thirty seconds, one minute.
Okay. To his comment, I just talked to Marion Lyons last September. And he said there's kind of a battle going on there, but when I moved in there, that was all overgrown trees back in there, there was nothing. There was no road. And airline says that is a dead end road to all, it's, it's a dead end road. She says it's a dead end road, official.
Anyone else?
Yes. Sorry, if the widened road, how much closer to my front door does it really get to go? I mean, and do we keep extending how much, I just, doesn't this feel out so many people? So if they extend it another foot and a half, then the city is going to buy me on top of that foot and a half, then people are going to know it or at, or front door, so what are we there? And who pays for this widening and stuff? Me, them, anybody?
You're working that, I mean, I'm like, right of way, now, obviously this, this beacon, it's a D I S system. It may not be totally accurate, generally speaking, the right of way in, in most areas is a beat on either side of the road that can be smaller and probably is smaller than on Robinson Street. But, you know, often people have used that right of way for, you know, for a purpose, but it does literally belong to the city.
So we, this, I believe you cannot be within twenty-five foot of the house with a new board has of the road. If you get in a zoning handbook or in zoning papers, any, you cannot take existing property and make the road within twenty-five feet of the house.
I think that goes to a new road.
It says on existing roads, you cannot change it.
We certainly have to do some research on that.
I think, I think, very finally.
That's okay, we don't have, I can't get it in this meeting, but we will check, we would certainly check it before anything, you know, were to occur if the road were to be widened or anything, that's right, obviously all of those items would, would need to be verified.
I think that there's a way, so, I mean, at the end of the day, this has really come down to not what's being built or anything, it's to whether this exemption should go through, whether this should be changed to a multi-family. I think with a lot of the business area around it, just needs to that, there is multi-family, there is some precedent for alternatives in the area. I think there is a compromise to be made, I think that, I, I hear the concerns, there's definitely, I, I would hear some concerns, but I think that there's a way that both we can address those concerns and proceed with this. And, no, not everybody is gonna be in agreement with that, but at least everybody can win to some degree. So, I would say if we are going to consider this, my motion or recommendation would be that we, if we do pass this, it would be with the how we're willing to say, the stipulation that the city worked on a wider road and placed concrete barriers at the end of Robinson Street to block off Chamber Estates.
That's, that is a whole area.
It was again possible.
So is that a motion?
That'd be a motion.
We do have a motion on the floor. So we have a motion on the floor to to approve the special exception with the stipulation that the road be widened and that Robinson Street, we're in the middle of a motion, I can't take one at this point. Widen the street and block off the end of Robinson Street as a dead end. Is there a second for that motion?
Sorry. I would, I guess I would add that the city would take that, use on city.
So, do we need to amend the original motion since we have a second?
Yes.
So, do we, how, tell, tell us the order of proceeding justice.
So, I suppose you would procedurally, you can do it a number of ways, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, I usually do this, or if you move to amend your motion to include that, that motion to amend your motion, seconded, passed, then you can go back to the original motion again. Delete past motion, insert new motion, or motion. I motion that we pass this or, this exemption with the exception that the city is responsible for widening the road and placing concrete and passable barriers at the end of Robinson Street.
So that is an amended motion, might we do accept that amended motion?
Physical, physical, oh my god. Physical. Physical barriers.
So now do we bother that amendment for that, or do we incorporate both?
If you incorporate both, you can go on and proceed through consensus and then do the next one.
Is there consensus to accept the amendment to the original motion? Okay, is there a discussion on that? We are beyond what we normally. And, and we've put on there that we can integrate first one on Street Park.
I really, I mean, we could definitely bring that up, I really don't think anybody's gonna be parking there. If it's an issue, we will definitely address it. But I just, I really don't find any, anybody would be brave enough to do that. That's just my. Addressing Street Parking, it's in a separate ordinance.
Okay, that's true. We could address that. So we have passed the period of public, of public comment, Mr. Watson has his hand up. Council, do you wish to represent us?
That's a, we need to go back to people that lived here long enough, that Robinson Street, I have a right to, it went over the river with that. Where, where the old road was, it went near the access, I call it the access road. It went over the river track to Seattle, but only entrance into the property. I've heard that there's on the the time I did Gold State over twenty-five, I've heard there's in down the end as a new entrance to try to, we need some traffic along that way. But you're, you're telling me to shut off my street, that was my street to get to the property. If you, you, everybody remember that, that was the river track, that was the only access in there. I've heard the other one, to try to recreate some property when I got there.
That road was, that ended by the, by the railroad and it's no longer a crossing, so it is no longer, we don't, we don't recognize Chamber Estates on our hazard reports or mainly street reports as an actual city.
But you're shutting off my entrance to the property, you have an existing.
There's definitely other entries.
Yeah, but you're talking something.
And that's the one you've been telling them to use.
Right.
And you've just said, stated that you told your renters that you cannot use Robinson Street, so you can't kind of deploy it.
You need to talk to the schools, schools are on the team, but everybody uses for a bus ride. But they didn't have any way for the bus running down either the street.
What typically happens on children's streets, including Marne, where there's the, the children come to.
And Aaron said, they're turning dump truck around in winter time, when you got down the end, we're literally, we're looking up, we're going to do that, so he'll have to come out and look at it. And don't forget to have a house on Robinson Street, you're shutting access off, you're going to take it down the house. Some put in house, it's got a different, it's, it's on Robinson Street, it's not a Chamber Estates on Robinson Street. If you're then going for the burger, that you may be shutting off the entrance to the house.
Well, you're working a driveway here, you don't have a house sort of here.
The house, the house we build on Robinson Street, we build on the railroad, the right of way, the railroad, right of way back to the property owner. And then the exit on the Robinson Street.
You'll have to point out where that is, because.
The last, last house on Robinson Street.
Over here?
Will you grab that Robinson Street, Chamber of Road, it's the last one, on the right hand side.
So I think he's talking about the building, it's more of the, yeah, that one.
But it's not, it's driveway, not, it's on Chamber Estates.
It's where you, it's where you end up staying in the property on that, down the street. So you're saying, correct, before you get to the, before you get to the railroad right of way, then the city's already deemed the property backed up, so we own it, we own it, the street is what you're thinking is correct, obviously.
Well, I don't see that that is material to the motion that we have in front of us, or you know, it's something that we consider.
But you're shutting access off to house. House on Robinson, house on Chamber Estates Drive.
That, I think the driveway should have been off of Robinson Street and it's not, so. Call the motion, call the book. We have a motion to approve the special exception with the stipulation that the road be widened at city expense and that Robinson Street be blocked as a dead end street. That's the motion, we have a second, all votes in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any input? So the ayes have a motion carries. So this obviously approves that this could be used for multi-family, there are many steps yet to go here. Including air planning. And including plan to widen the street and to head ends it at the end of the street, so those are all things that must be in place before, um, government, the current. Thank you very much for your comments, I think we can make some changes as a result of your concerns.
Actually, you may want to form a fire department if we close off, because they want that locked open.